Thank you for attending the City Council Candidate Forum on Racial Justice. I'm Jane Stevenson and I'm a core member of Western Mass SURGE, which is Western Mass Showing Up for Racial Justice. SURGE is a national network that mobilizes white folks to join in the multiracial movement for racial justice with commitment and accountability. The Western Mass chapter of SURGE was launched in 2014 and has lately been engaged in work around Black and Indigenous reparations.
And I am Yaiping Douglas. I come to you from Northampton Abolition Now. NAN was formed following the uprisings in the summer of 2020 and is committed to advancing racial and economic justice by organizing to divest from policing and invest in our community. NAN is working to grow and support community-led initiatives that are accountable to those who are most harmed by policing. And we welcome the support of anyone who wants to help imagine and create a Northampton community grounded in justice and accountability that meets the needs of all people.
Thanks, Yaiping. We are excited to get started with our forum tonight. As we come together to consider the future of Northampton, it's equally important to recognize its past. The land now called Northampton is the home of many Native people, including the Nittmuck and the Pakumtuk. Indigenous people live on this land today. In a forum like this where city government is being discussed, it's vital to acknowledge and recognize that we are on stolen land. And there are steps that non-Native people can take to act in solidarity with Indigenous communities to begin the long process of repairing the harm that settler colonialism has caused. Those of us who benefit from the violent dispossession of Native lands can work to rectify those historic harms by writing to our elected officials to support the Massachusetts Indigenous Legislative Agenda, which includes five very important priority bills for '21, '22. We can pay reparation monies in direct support of Indigenous sovereignty and healing. We can advocate for Black, for land-back initiatives, and we can support local Indigenous cultural centers. We encourage every non-Native person in this forum to take additional action toward repairing the harm that those of us who are settlers have caused. Information about all these actions and other ways to show solidarity can be found in the chat in a few minutes. So before launching the candidate forum on racial justice, we will take one minute in silence to reflect on the history of this land and to center our intentions toward reparative action. Thank you.
The purpose of this forum is to ask our city council candidates to reflect on their commitment to racial justice issues. The candidates were given the questions a few days ago, along with links to many resources that helped us formulate our questions. I'm now going to turn it over to Robert, another volunteer with Northampton Abolition Now, to share some additional important background information on this event.
Hey, everyone. I'm Robert Eastman. And as Yaiping said, I'm another volunteer for Northampton Abolition Now, or NAN. Before we start the forum, we feel it's important for the public to know that three city council candidates, Jim Nash, Stan Moulton, and Marissa Elkins, declined our invitations to participate in our racial justice candidate forum. As a gesture of good faith and transparency, we shared all questions with candidates in advance and provided participants with the resources to ensure that they understand the intent behind our questions clearly. All candidates would have had the opportunity to respond to the same questions without any editorial interventions from moderators. In our view, this approach to the forum demonstrated clearly that our commitment to open dialogue inclusive of all candidates. Councillor Nash declined on the grounds that the forum would not be impartial. Candidate Moulton invoked concerns that the forum would be partisan or not offer a level playing field. And candidate Elkins named Northampton Abolition Now having already endorsed candidates as a primary reason for withdrawing her participation. Given that all candidates were sent the same questions with resources ahead of time, and given that the forum tonight and tomorrow, or tonight, consists only of moderators asking each candidate the same questions, we're sincerely confused as to how our support for candidates who have shown strong, concrete commitments to racial and economic justice affects our forum's mission of engaging in critical and open dialogue about issues of racial and economic justice that have not yet been addressed in the forum's interviews and questionnaires candidates have already participated in. We're dismayed that these candidates have chosen to refuse an invitation for the only candidate forum which focuses directly on racial and economic justice, hosted by two organizations which focus solely on these issues. We support any candidate who shows a real commitment to racial and economic justice, and we are strongly committed to dispassionate public education around these issues. NAN would be thrilled to endorse additional candidates who demonstrate that they stand by our values. We hope that one day we can endorse every single candidate running for office because that will mean our community has developed a strong consensus in favor of racial justice. True fairness and a level playing field requires radically transforming our society. Candidates who claim to be ready to take the lead on these issues must, at a minimum, have the courage to talk to their neighbors and community members. At the very least, we hope that candidates missing the forum will submit answers to the questions in writing so that the public can see where they stand on these pressing issues. Thank you.
Thanks. And a couple notes here. Some of our questions reference two important documents the city of Northampton commissioned. One is the Unlocking Opportunity: An Assessment of Barriers to Fair Housing in Northampton Report. And the other is the Northampton Policing Review Commission Report. When possible, we will provide excerpts from these reports embedded in the questions when we're asking the questions. Also, we will be pasting the questions into the chat as they are asked.
We will hear from three candidates tonight, from wards one, three, and four, and from one at-large candidate. Each candidate will answer most of the same questions. We will hear one candidate answer all nine questions and then move on to the next candidate. We will start with Lemmy Coffin from Ward one, then hear from Jessie Hassenger from Ward two, then David Criss from Ward three, and finish with David Murphy at-large. Answers will be brief, and we ask the candidates help us to move the forum along by keeping answers to within the time limits provided. We also ask that audience members mute themselves. Lemmy, we will start by asking you to introduce yourself. You will have one minute to do so. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? My name's Lemmy Coffin. I live in Ward one. I've lived here since 2017. I've been working in social justice for over 10 years. I got my start working with queer youth in high schools and making schools safer for queer youth, eventually working on the school-to-prison pipeline in schools. And now, you know, I've just, I went on to study government and social work at Smith College, and I'm really looking forward to offering my skills to Northampton in making really innovative policies that serve everyone.
Thank you, Lemmy. Before we start with the question, we'll listen to a three-minute audio clip from the podcast Intercept with Chanjerai Komunika.
The killing of George Floyd by Minneapolis cops was another horrific and needless death, another unarmed Black man killed by police and recorded for all the world to see. It was another spectacle of violence at the hands of the state. And we've seen this before, like literally, we've seen it. Black men choked by police in broad daylight, uprisings against the carceral state, police, and prisons, and pictures that prove that torture is going on in the institutions of criminal punishment. And we see the police are mostly not held accountable. They don't get fired. They don't get charged. And in the few cases where they do get charged, it's extremely rare for them to be convicted. But what is right before our eyes and on our cameras is not the entire picture of the change that needs to happen. If we look off-camera and back just a little bit into history, we can see the conclusive failure of the kinds of reforms that established Democrats are proposing right now. Yes, use-of-force legislation is crucial. But remember, a judge found Officer Pantaleo guilty of using a banned chokehold when he killed Eric Garner. Pantaleo is free today. Also, as African-American Studies Professor Naomi Murakawa has pointed out, the concept of community policing was at the heart of the two largest crime reform legislative efforts of the 20th century. The first one was sponsored by Lyndon B. Johnson, the 1968 Omnibus Crime Control and Safe Street Act, which created the Law Enforcement Administration. What did that result in? $10 billion was doled out to police departments, often in the name of improving police and community relations. This didn't mean treating people differently. It meant taxpayer money was spent on police-public-relations campaigns. The second major criminal reform effort was the Clinton's 1994 Crime Bill. This established the Office of Community-Oriented Policing Services within the Justice Department. And what did that result in? $9 billion given to police departments over six years. And yet, here we are. What we have to grapple with is this. These images are showing us a violence that's so clear that we've stopped being able to see beyond it. The spectacle of violence is only the tip of the spear. It's only the most acute manifestation of 150 years of racist state violence punishing the poor and failed reform. More training workshops for cops or another Black police chief is not going to fix this. Cops who kneel with protesters and then stand up and tear-gas them is not going to fix this. What would it look like to try something else? To defund and dismantle police departments? And yes, to abolish the police? What would it look like to abolish prisons?
Okay, so for question one, you will have two minutes to respond. What is your understanding of the Movement for Black Lives' stance on police reforms that give more power, money, and legitimacy to police, such as more police training, community policing, co-responder programs, and more? And why do you think this is their stance? Go ahead, Lemmy.
Yeah, thanks so much, Yaiping. You know, I think the Movement for Black Lives policy platform is really clear on the sort of anecdotes to systemic racism. And it is really clear that things like community policing don't work. And I'm reminded of a conversation I had just this weekend with someone I was talking to while campaigning. And they said, well, what about community policing? You know, we need to build trust between police and the community. And, you know, it's sort of like with as much trust that could be built, the tools at the disposal of the police department are still based on punishment, incarceration, things that disrupt things like people's jobs. incarceration, things that disrupt things like people's jobs, people's housing. So even with the most trust built, we're still going to see poor results, right? We're not going to see any sort of results around community, around, you know, solving or helping with systemic racism. And so I think, you know, what the Movement for Black Lives is talking about, from at least my understanding, is that, you know, when the law of our land for so long has been built on the war on drugs, and before that, loitering laws, and before that, you know, all these things that we saw in the wake of the abolition of slavery to keep, you know, labor cheap, basically. You know, the law that police are enforcing is still so inherently racist that it can be really difficult, that building up a system that is still enforcing these laws that we know are not just is, and is going to be antithetical always to our goal of people staying, has people staying employed, looking for liberation for black and indigenous folks. So that's my sort of understanding.
Thank you, Lemmy. All right, for question two, there are two parts. This question relates to the 90-plus-page report the city released in 2018 called Unlocking Opportunity: An Assessment of Barriers to Fair Housing in Northampton. This report gave an overview of the housing situation in Northampton. Some of the recommendations included rent stabilization or rent control, investing in public transportation, and creating more affordable housing. For the first part of this question, you will have two minutes to respond. Part one is, what would you, as city councillor, do to address affordable housing, renters' rights, and issues that houseless residents in Northampton face? Go ahead.
Sorry, did you say I had one minute or two?
I'm sorry, two minutes. I might have said one minute. I mean, I might have said ten minutes. I don't know, but I mean two.
Okay. Yeah. So I think there's a few answers to this question. So to start with sort of affordable housing, a trend I've seen in Northampton. You know, I think a lot of people are talking about building new affordable housing, which I think is great. Obviously, I support it. But I also support maintaining existing affordable housing. I currently am a renter in Astor Fields, and there's a lot of affordable housing in Ward one specifically that was sort of like built, you know, not in the last 10 years. And I, and I see this even in like places in Ward three and other places. But what a sort of pattern can happen is that landlords or building property owners will sort of do the bare minimum to upkeep buildings, and then the sort of building kind of gets older and older and older, and then they will sell, and then it gets renovated into sort of luxury apartments, and then rent goes up. And so like, I've always had this sort of tension of like, I want, I would love renovations to my apartments, but I don't want my rent to go up. And like, you know, I have mold in my apartment, but like, oh, if I call attention to it, my rent might go up if they like build a new bathroom or something. So I think I just get really worried about, I think maintaining housing and renters' rights is really pivotal to affordable housing overall. Because when buildings are maintained better, we don't see them like in this cycle of sort of disrepair selling, renovated into luxury over and over, over different decades in different areas. And for unhoused folks in Northampton, I definitely think building up support, you know, making our services actually accountable to unhoused people because right now we have a problem where a lot of the services don't feel accessible to them. So how can we build services that are actually like designed and thought about by folks who use them rather than what people sort of think people need? So I wish I could have gone in more into that, but I'm out of time.
Lemmy, please don't worry because you have a whole second part of this question, and you can just, you can keep going. So for the second part, we're going to look at these three recommendations of the Barriers to Access Report, and we'd like for you to provide your rating of importance on a scale of zero to 10, with zero being not at all important and 10 being imperative. And after giving your rating, you're going to have two minutes to share further thoughts, so you'll get to keep going. Okay, so on a scale of zero to 10, what is your reading of importance for rent control and rent stabilization?
10.
Okay, how about investing in public transportation?
10.
And the last one is creating more affordable housing?
10.
All right, now, two minutes are yours to talk more about your ratings and anything else you'd like to talk about in regard to this question.
Great. Yeah, I think 10 on the create more affordable housing and put like an asterisk, like I said, maintaining affordable housing. I think it's a really big problem in Northampton. You know, these sort of new projects, but we don't think about sustaining old properties. And, yeah, and also creating better rules for landlords to upkeep those properties. And rent control and rent stabilization, I think there are ways, you know, there's a lot of ways that are sort of city ordinances. Like, there's sort of just the traditional rent control route, right? Like, how do we stabilize rent in this sort of traditional ways? But I think there's also ways to, if we're really having renters on city council, and we actually have people thinking about renters when they're making laws and not just homeowners, like, right? That's what we see a lot in city councils, like homeowners are thinking about the ordinances or the zoning or whatever, and we're not really thinking about what renters need, and the whole sort of system is built around people who own properties. So I think if we can really put forward thinking about people who don't own property or people who rent property or unhoused people in all parts of the government, we can also think of just new systems, you know, like we have a whole zoning board to protect how people build in Northampton, to protect property values, all of that. But there's like no recourse for, like I said, poor building maintenance of a landlord, right? So we have these huge systems and these huge important systems, like people think the zoning board is like one of the most important things in Northampton, but that doesn't mean anything for renters. So why would a renter be incentivized to even participate in local government? So anyway, I'm going on a rant, but point being, I think there's like just the sort of traditional rent stabilization and control, but there's also a lot of other systemic changes we could make to center renters and low-income and poor and working-class people in governance overall to help all of these things.
Thank you, Lemmy. We will now play another three-minute audio clip, this time with activist Mariam Kaba in preparation for question three.
So what I mean, and I think some other PIC abolitionists mean by PIC abolition, is that we want to end the whole system of reinforcing relationships between surveillance, policing, the courts, imprisonment, that fuel, maintain, and expand social and economic inequality, institutional racism, capitalism. So it's not just prisons, which is why it's really more accurate to talk about PIC abolition. I would add that it means that we're really interested in kind of doing away with the system rather than finding ways to make it work better or for it to be kinder and gentler. Because at its bottom, abolitionists, PIC abolitionists, don't see the prison industrial complex as like broken the way that if you hear a lot of reformers talk, they talk about the criminal punishment system being broken. Abolitionists really think, nah, actually, it's working really, really well at surveilling and policing and imprisoning and killing exactly the people that it's targeting. And so our job as PIC abolitionists is to work to diminish drastically the scope and the power of the prison industrial complex while we're simultaneously increasing the ability of the communities that are targeted by it to be stronger, to be more self-determined, to be healthier. And as part of that, and as part of our practice, we're always asking consistently, what is actual accountability? What is safety? What can justice look like and feel like? And what are the ways that we can actually build our worlds so that violence in all of its forms is addressed and reduced? That's a huge part, I think, of what a lot of people don't understand about PIC abolitionists, is that we're really concerned with ending the sources of violence, right? We think prisons don't actually solve violence because they're inherently violent. And we think that they're actually a very concentrated form of violence, and that prisons are designed to actually bring premature death. So if you're an abolitionist and a PIC abolitionist, and your concerns are about harm and violence, then you don't want to quote-unquote "end violence" by using violence. That's, that's a huge kind of no-no. And so a big part of the work is to expose that the logic of using prisons and policing and punishment have actually not proven effective to address the systemic causes of violence. And PIC abolition is about challenging those logics that make those institutions and practices possible. So that's how I do define PIC abolition for myself, and it's also in part how I try to talk about it with people in my life, you know?
Okay, so for this question, you'll have two minutes to respond. What is your definition of abolition, and what informs your understanding of abolition? Go ahead, Lemmy.
Great. You know, history is really important to me, so I think the first thing that sort of informs my understanding of the word abolition is, is like the abolition of slavery. And, you know, we have this part of our history that was really built, like our whole economic system was sort of centered around slavery, and now we're in this sort of new era where a lot of our economic system is also centered around policing and incarceration. And it is hard to imagine, I think, for some folks to really move beyond that. But I find abolition very exciting. I find abolition as the possibility to think about new logics of how we want to organize accountability and safety and for everyone, you know? And, and I think that my definition of abolition is one of of building safety, accountability, and sort of security and financial security, emotional security, all of those things rooted not in sort of the violence towards anybody. And I think that that is possible and exciting. And so, yeah, I think I'll just stop there.
Y'all, please forgive me. I have like eight, I have to have like eight screens up because I have that like fancy thing where I have the timer in my, on my shoulder. So like, I'm managing a lot of little buttons here. So if I miss a queue, that's what's going on. Lemmy, thank you so much for that answer. All right, next question, question number four. You will also have two minutes to respond. Last year, the City of Evanston, Illinois formed a reparations fund from sales tax on recreational marijuana that attempts to address past and present harm to black residents, including homeownership grants. Asheville, North Carolina also formed a reparations initiative last year that funds programs around homeownership and career opportunities for black residents, but does not offer direct payments. And locally, Amherst has created the African Heritage Reparations Assembly to research and propose a reparations plan that will include a fund and a community-wide process of reconciliation and repair for harms against black people. In this context of municipalities creating reparation funds and attempting community repair and reconciliation, how do you propose the City of Northampton begin to reckon with its past and current harm to black residents? Go ahead, Lemmy, you have two minutes.
Thanks so much. I have so many thoughts, but I think sort of to start, it's sort of like past and current harm to black residents. I think a regional approach to this would be really important. And I know that the city at one point had a program, this is super niche, where basically they had, like, people in our government go to the hill towns to sort of support their local governments and getting more grants. And I think we could, like, that's a really simple way we could do something with other communities that, you know, have faced sort of redlining and other harms that, Northampton, you know, with the tofu curtain and everything, you know, the big divide between the Southern Valley and the Northern Valley. I think there are programs we could do to just try to, similar to the way we've had programs that help hill towns, to help this, like Springfield and Holyoke. Additionally, I think I was really disappointed earlier this year when I saw Mayor Narcoitz drop the community impact fees for marijuana. You know, marijuana was seen as this big sort of like thing that was going to help our town and to let go of such an important fee so early on. And the revenue from those community impact fees did start the resilience hub, but I just saw that as such a perfect opportunity to begin some reparations work in Northampton. And I was disappointed to see us sort of give up the community impact fees of marijuana so quickly when so much of our tax base is fraught and, you know, over with the override and so many other things to give up such an important source of revenue for an industry that's basically like really benefiting off using our community that doesn't necessarily benefit everyone unless we have these things. So, yeah, I would say bring back the community impact fee and start thinking about how we can use that for reparations.
Okay, thank you so much.
We will now swing back to the Northampton Policing Review Commission Report for this question. The report recommended the formation of the now-new Community Care Department. What principles should be prioritized when selecting members for the yet-to-be-formed advisory board? I'll give two choices, A and B. A, the advisory board should be committed to non-coercive, non-punitive principles and approaches, and only be open to members who agree to work in support of those values. Or B, the advisory board does not need to be committed to non-coercive, non-punitive principles and approaches. Please choose A or B, and then we will follow up with clarifying questions.
A.
Okay, and what does A look like to you, the non-coercive, non-punitive principles and approaches?
Yeah. Oh, I have a minute. Okay. Oh, my gosh, one minute. Okay. So I think that this is what's so exciting about the Department of Community Care. It's super close to my heart. I feel like we've done so much work to build connections with people who have been thinking about non-coercive and non-punitive principles and approaches in our community, and also building up that muscle for people who might not have already had it or have been thinking about it. I don't think that those are principles that are necessarily like already in the city government, and we've been working really hard to bridge those resources and really like do some work. And a lot of people are already doing that work. So I think, I don't even know if I'm answering the question except talking about how excited I am about the Department of Community Care and how much opportunity there is in these. But, yeah. That's all I can do right now, I guess.
Yeah, Ping, did you have a follow-up to that, or?
Oh, you know, I think I messed up my moderation and did not realize that there would be follow, that we were blending about two minutes into the whole question. So I think you can use one more minute to elaborate on whatever you would like to on that answer.
Great. Yeah, so I think getting smart about advisory, I don't even remember the question you asked me. Sorry, will you repeat the question?
Oh, anything that you want to elaborate on, on your answer that the advisory board should be committed to non-coercive, non-punitive principles and approaches, and only be open to members who agree to work in support of those views?
Right. Yeah, I think there's really smart ways we can think about advisory boards and input and distribution of power in ways that allow for more participation. One of my big parts of my platform is expanding avenues of participation, and I think allowing for people to be on advisory boards that, you know, maybe, you know, I think a lot of you know, maybe, you know, I think a lot of the people who are committed to non-coercive, non-punitive principles are also very busy people who are managing their own work lives or, you know, so we have to really think about imagining new possibilities to be accountable to those folks. And, um, yeah, really creating opportunity and incentive for them to participate, including, you know, stipends, childcare, those types of things to actually allow for them to participate in our advisory boards and to be, to get input from them.
Excellent, thank you so much. Lemmy, the next question is about the power balance between mayor and councillors, city councillors. You'll have two minutes to respond. In East Hampton, Springfield, and many cities across the country, the city council holds more legislative power than the North Hampton City Council currently does. Would you advocate for the mayor-city council power balance to change or stay the same? So please explain your idea, and you have two minutes.
Great. Yeah, I definitely think the executive, that executive, like mayoral power has a place. And I also think that city council historically has been very disempowered in different ways. Like, it seems like a lot of the times when, you know, residents go to city councillors, it's sort of like, oh, we don't have that much power, we don't have that much power, that's sort of a refrain. And, um, and so I think it's sort of twofold. There's one sort of changing the culture of the relationship between the mayor and the city council to of course be collaborative and generative. And also, you know, accountable, right? Like, the city council at its core is, is there to hold the mayor accountable. And I think right now, we could, the city council could be doing more to think about accountability or innovation on a sort of cultural norm level. And then there's the sort of charter norms that I definitely think city council could have more power. You know, there's, in the last Charter Review Commission process, I know, or Committee Process, I know that there was some folks really trying to talk about that. And it seems like the city solicitor and the mayor were pretty clear that executive power was the best way to run the city. And, and while I think that's true for some instances, I think there are other instances where there's not, that's not true. So I think we can really get smart about how to sort of think about what needs to be accountable to residents, what needs to be accountable to city councillors, and what doesn't. And think about that as much as we think of this sort of efficiency machine that we want. I don't, I don't think efficiency is the, is efficiency at that level eventually might let, leave people feeling unheard or left out of the conversation. And I think we're seeing that tension a lot right now.
Great, thank you. I have the next question as well. Are you, how are you doing, Lemmy? Are you okay? Need a drink of water or something? This is like, we're going, we're going completely non-stop with you here. All right. Got it, okay. For question seven, candidates were allowed to choose either seven A or seven B. Do you remember which one you chose?
And you have two minutes, right?
Yeah, you're gonna have two minutes. I'm just wondering, did you choose the one about rematriation or the one about S R O's in school?
Um, I, I could, let's go with seven A. Yeah, I didn't choose it ahead of time, I don't think.
Oh, do you want me to read both of them? And?
No, I have them up. I wish I could spend a minute or something on each of them, but we'll just go with seven A. Yeah.
You probably could, because it's only, you get two minutes. Do you want to do that?
It's okay, I think it's better to just leave it to the language of the thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just for people listening, I'm gonna read that question. Seven A, given that the city of North Hampton both owns lands and taxes residents who own property, how do you see the city beginning to reckon with its current benefit from and history of colonization and stolen land? And how could the city council begin to build relationships with Nipmuck and other indigenous leaders locally to attempt land rematriation and/or other projects addressing past and present harm? All right, two minutes to you.
Thanks. Um, you know, I think the one place to start is the sort of thinking about bringing these sort of ideas of indigenous, you know, rematriation, land back to the Historical Society and to historical groups in North Hampton, and whether that's, again, like a sort of cultural norm thing or through policy, really thinking about, when we think about historic preservation, including indigenous voices, like just to sort of start, right, as a starting point. I know in just, you know, recently I saw in the Gazette, like yesterday or today, that in Rhode Island, the Historic Society just gave land over to the Narragansett people. And that was really exciting to see, like actually a city sort of do that. And that is actually where we do have some power as a city when we're thinking about sort of historic preservation or, you know, ecological preservation. We can think about including indigenous folks in that conversation, and if not making that sort of some, some sort of stewardship of that land. And I think there's a lot to offer there. A lot of opportunity for our city to just think about that. And I know, like, even it, you know, there's, there's land and there's often a complicated like interplay of like state and local forces sometimes with like land. And even just bringing to the attention, if, if a state, if the state's auctioning off some land in North Hampton or around North Hampton, bringing to the attention to indigenous groups that it is even being auctioned off, supporting them in figuring out how to purchase that land or get that land would be a couple ways. But, and also there's this sort of individual, you know, farm. I can't get into that in 14 seconds, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Lemmy. Now I'm going to read three key principles about disability justice. As you hear the principles, please indicate the level of your support and advocacy of it on a scale of zero to 10, where zero means you would not advocate for it, and 10 meaning you would strongly advocate for it. You will have the opportunity, after rating your advocacy, you'll have two minutes to share your thoughts on why you chose the ratings that you did. So, number one, all initiatives must be non-coercive and done with the consent of the person who needs support, care, or de-escalation.
10.
Okay, number two, peer-led and initiated programming, resources, and support should be funded and prioritized over psychiatric facilities and interventions.
10.
Okay, number three, we must validate neurodivergent and/or disabled people's needs, desires, experiences, and leadership over those of professionals.
10.
Okay, all right, go ahead and share your thoughts. You have two minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I think as a sort of social worker, that can be more on the sort of professional side of this question. This question is really important to me in my practice, when, every day at work, thinking about how to deal with families who are going through really hard times, while also, you know, they're facing sort of the court system, they're facing removal of their children, and also sort of centering what they want and need at the same time can feel like such a hard balance to strike. And as the sort of professional that's often in that position, sometimes it takes a lot of sort of like humbling myself to center sort of what clients and families need in that moment, even though I'm like thinking like, if you just did this one thing, that would mean a lot. And so I think on a sort of government or policy level, we really have to rethink what we consider to be expert and who we consider to be expert in our community. And that's not to say that this is sort of devaluing, you know, people who have experience or professional experience in certain fields. But I think there's a lot of experience that isn't tapped in our community because of the sort of power dynamics that exist in helping fields like social work, therapy, all of that. And, and again, similar to like services for unhoused folks, if we're not including and accountable to the ideas of the people using the service, we're gonna overlook a lot and actually probably waste a lot of money. So I think these peer-led and initiated, initiated programming is not only serve people better, but it also is more fiscally sound. So, thanks.
Thank you. For our last question, you'll have two minutes. We've heard a lot about community responders and police responses to situations. And the North Hampton Policing Review Commission, in its final report, advocated for removing police from as many unnecessary interactions as possible to reduce the footprint of policing in the community. Can you describe what your vision for public safety is going forward? Whether and where police fit in, and why you think that is the way forward to reduce the harms done by policing? Go ahead, Lemmy.
Yeah. I mean, I think first and foremost, my vision for public safety means centering a sort of social justice, racial justice, anti-oppression lens. And I think when we do that, I'm not sure where policing will fit in, if we're really truly doing that, because I think what we see is that, and what we know is that policing really does not serve communities of color, Black folks, you know, Latinx folks. I'm not sure if policing will sort of fit into that. But my main priority is sort of centering, you know, all voices and thinking about our vision for public safety. And where we land is sort of, I'm not sure, I don't like sort of having a crystal ball about this. But I think if we really think about what policing, the evidence-based, you know, the evidence shows that when people are more paid more, when they're, you know, have healthcare, when they have housing, when they are mentally healthy, everyone is safer and everybody does better. And I think that's what I envision when I think about community safety is really community care, which is why thinking about the Department of Community Care was so exciting, what feels like many months ago now. And thinking about how to offer something to North Hampton that is rooted in a vision of community safety and community care that I actually believe helps everyone be safer and actually is proven to reduce the crime rate in, in other cities that have established these things. The crime rate has gone down. And so, yeah, I think the Department of Community Care truly rooted in non-coercive practices and everything else is sort of my vision. And I hope to sort of see that vision continue as I am a city councillor.
Lemmy, thank you so much for sharing your stance with us in regard to these really important issues. Your time is, you've accomplished your job here on the forum. Best of luck on Tuesday. We'll be, Tuesday is coming up, right? Yeah, we'll be moving on now to Jessie, is it Hassenger or Hassinger?
I don't have a preference.
What? Are you kidding me?
No, I'm not kidding you.
What is your, what did your people growing up say?
I've, I've always, I've always emphasized the G when I'm on the phone so that people can spell it correctly. But I think when I say it, it's always Hassinger.
Hassinger, okay, yeah, you don't have to emphasize the G just because we're a bunch of dummies, so it's okay. Hassinger, we're gonna move on to Jessie Hassinger. For people who just joined us or who joined us partway through Lemmy's time, I'm Jane Stevenson, I'm a core member of Western Mass Search, which is showing up for racial justice. And my co-moderator over here is Yapping Douglas.
I'm with North Hampton Abolition now.
And we did some introductory things when we brought Lemmy on. Those of you who just came on will sadly miss those things, but you can find a majority of those things in the chat. So do feel free to kind of scroll through and check out the, some of the introductory things that we did. All right, Jessie, are you ready to roll here?
I am ready. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Bet.
Thank you. So Jessie, we will start by asking you to introduce yourself. You will have one minute to do so. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Jessie Hassinger. As a white, cis, queer Jew, I have lived experience that is different from the normal white Christian viewpoint. I am white, so I do not face the immediate reactions that non-white passing individuals face on a daily basis. At the same time, I have faced antisemitism and homophobia many times over in my life. Because I have had those experiences, I have developed an acute empathy and feel akinship to all peoples who have experienced oppression. I have dedicated my life to learning from others' personal stories and about how insidious white supremacy really is in this country. As a white man, I have a visibility bias to overcome because my race has done a shit job of being an accomplice for marginalized and oppressed communities in this country. I have a proven track record of listening to others' experiences, being part of the fight, part of the conversation, and part of finding the myriad solutions for these issues.
Thank you. So question one follows an audio clip from the podcast Intercept with Chanjerai Kumanyika. Since the audience already heard that audio clip, we're going to play a shorter audio clip about the same topic from activist Kat Brooks.
The job of police have always been to defend the status quo and to do that by any means necessary in the controlling surveillance, incarceration, or sometimes elimination of Black bodies. They're still doing their job.
Here's Kat Brooks again.
They're still protectors of property, protectors of economic system, and they are the frontline soldiers for the larger beast of US imperialism, white supremacist practice and policy. And that's why reform won't work, right? Because those are its roots, those are the roots it has desperately clung onto and that have served America, not Black America or Brown America or Indigenous America, but American institutions, you know, for 400 years. The basic premise is one of violence and punishment. And that's not how you get to healthy communities.
Okay, so question one, you'll have two minutes to respond. What is your understanding of the Movement for Black Lives stance on police reforms that give more power, money, and legitimacy to police, such as more police training, community policing, co-responder programs, and more? And why do you think this is their stance? Go ahead, Jessie.
Around police reforms specifically, three of the six policy platforms that is part of the Movement for Black Lives and their 2020 vision is end the war on Black people, divest, invest, and community control. Each of these points directly relate to the structure of policing and a vision for a future that calls for building a strong community structure through autonomy and the ability to make decisions about their own futures without the constant interference of white supremacy in any of its forms, most specifically as the violent arm of white supremacy, which is the institution of policing. For over 400 years, there's been a war on Black communities, Black youth, Black women, Black trans, queer, gender, nonconforming, and intersex people, Black disabled people, Black health, and Black migrants via the use of detention, jailing, imprisoning, via the use of the death penalty, via the war on drugs, surveillance on Black communities, via pre-trial detention and money bail, and via the use of past criminal history. None of these are very, none of these are, excuse me, none of these very real and traumatic elements can be fixed by reform. Reform is a Band-Aid used on a gaping wound. It hasn't changed any of the violence that has been happening since the beginning of policing over 150 years ago. And it directly stems out of the history of policing, which was derived directly from slave patrols. I believe this is part of why the Movement for Black Lives takes this stance. There is no difference between how police surveil and treat BIPOC people today and how they surveilled and treated slaves. Their job is to keep the population in line and not allow them to gain any foothold of independence, lest the white landowners feel threatened. Reform does not work, it never has and never will, because it does not address the root cause of the violence. because it does not address the root cause of the violence against black, Indigenous, and people of colors communities in this country, which is, in two words, white supremacy.
Thank you, Jesse. All right, number two, this question has two parts and it relates to that, what I, for the audience members who just joined us, there are two documents that we, that some of our questions come out of. One of them is this next one, it's called the Unlocking Opportunity and Assessment of Barriers to Fair Housing in Northampton. The other was the Northampton Police Commission Review Report. So you'll, when possible, we're gonna, you know, use excerpts and direct quotes from those documents in the formulation of these questions. So back to you, Jesse, there are two parts to this question. And you'll have two minutes to respond to, I believe, both parts, yeah, two minutes to respond to each part. Okay, so for the first question, the first part of question number two, it is what, the question relates to the 90-plus-page report on Unlocking Opportunity: Assessment of Barriers to Fair Housing in Northampton. This report gave an overview of the housing situation in Northampton and some of the recommendations included rent stabilization or rent control, investing in public transportation, and creating more affordable housing. For the first part of question number two, you will have two minutes to respond to this question. What do you do as city councillor to, or what would you do as city councillor to address affordable housing, renters' rights, and other issues that Northampton residents without homes face? All right, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Expanding the possibilities of alternate housing, such as tiny houses and community-supported housing that is able to be given to the houseless residents to ensure that they have a safe place to sleep, keep their belongings, and call home, would be certainly one of the things that I would push for as a city councillor. Beyond the houseless communities, there are too many people who are unable to live in this city because rents, both for apartments and businesses, are way too high. It is cheaper to live in New York City and its boroughs than it is to live here, and that's just not right. I applaud what city council has already done in increasing the amount of affordable housing for any new structures that are built, but they didn't ask the most important question, what is affordable? To those who are underemployed or temporarily unemployed, the level of affordability is much lower than it is to developers and landlords who will be making the determination of what affordable actually is. We need to regulate those prices. Oh, I have a minute left. That, that red background makes me think that I have much, much less than a minute.
I'm sorry, it's terrible.
No, that's okay. I'll get used to it. I think that the, sorry, I kind of lost my train of thought here.
You can have a few minutes, sex.
That's fine. We, we need to regulate the prices that are, that are happening and in order to create more affordable housing. And I agree with Lemmy in terms of reinvesting in the buildings that are already here and really making sure that we're making best use of those. And then it wasn't part of the question, and I know it's part of the next question, but public transportation, I think, is an important thing to continue to keep in mind and expand as well. And I know I'll be able to talk about that a little bit further.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, I think the red background is, not, not only is it terribly unflattering to me, but it's very alarming. And I'm sorry about that, that's just,
That's okay.
That's the tech we have. All right, so you'll have another couple of questions because this is such an important thing. That for part two, the following recommendations of the Barrier to Access Report, please provide your rating of importance on a scale of zero to 10, with zero being not at all important and 10 being imperative. After giving your rating, you will have one minute to share, or you'll have two minutes to share further thoughts. All right, on a scale of zero to 10, rent control and rent stabilization?
10.
All right, how about investing in public transportation?
10.
And creating more affordable housing?
I would rate that a 10 as well.
Okay, you have two minutes to share your thoughts on these.
Thank you. I think all of these are imperative issues to discuss. And they're very complicated because of the laws that we have currently in the city. There are laws barring rent control that we need to deconstruct so that we can really begin to have more accessible apartments for everyone. I would very, as city councillor, I would definitely be looking into alternatives to, to that and to being able to deconstruct those obstacles to actually do some sort of rent stabilization, both, again, both for people who are looking for places to live as well as businesses, because part of our, part of the great thing about our Main Street is the variety of businesses that there are. And I think we need to increase that, especially coming out of COVID. Public transportation is an enormous issue that we need to fix. And I feel like the, it's one that gets overlooked very frequently. And I don't know if it's because there are so few people that are working in our government that take public transportation, or if it's just something that because we see buses always on Main Street, we automatically think that transportation, public transportation, is available to everyone. But the speed at which it moves and the frequency with which it appears is very difficult, especially if, if somebody is having to get to a job that is, you know, more than a mile away. And in those cases, sometimes it's even faster to walk than it is to take public transportation. And that just shouldn't be the case. Creating more affordable housing is important, but we, as I said before, also have to define what affordable means in order for that actually to have a positive impact on our communities.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jesse. The next question accompanies the audio clip we played featuring Miriam Kaba. We'll play a shorter clip of Miriam Kaba now.
As a prison industrial complex or PIC abolitionist, Miriam says their goals go further than reform. And it's not just about ending prisons completely, it's deeper than that.
A big part of PIC abolition is to transform the conditions that would allow for prisons, policing, and surveillance to exist in the first place.
Okay. So you'll have two minutes to respond. The question is, what is your definition of abolition? And what informs your understanding of abolition? Go ahead, Jesse.
Abolition has been used as a fear-inducing word by conservatives because it hasn't been defined in a way that is easy to understand. I really think that the topic is a difficult one to boil down into a soundbite. And so it frequently becomes a way for conservatives to peg people as abolitionists. And automatically, the idea and the knee-jerk reaction is that, oh, that must be a bad thing. To me, abolition means that there is a pathway to a vision of a world where communities uplift and support each other, look out for one another, and protect one another. That because of where policing originated as slave patrols, it is inherently centered around white supremacy. And what abolition means is deconstructing that core of white supremacy, whether it's around policing or at the center of the PIC or at the center of laws and court issues that are, that are rampant. And so it's about getting back to a place where community is supporting each other and it is strengthening and building a more just communities that are able to maintain and are able to really support each other is, is, is the center of this all. And I think that my understanding of abolition and how I continue to be informed about it is through the words and and speeches and, and points of view of BIPOC individuals the world over.
Thank you, Jesse. Do you need a drink of water? Is it time for a little healthcare here?
Yeah, it, it might be. I'll drink while you're, while you're asking this next one.
Awesome, okay, don't, don't neglect yourself here. For question four, you will have two minutes to answer. Last year, the city of Evanston, Illinois formed a reparations fund from a sales tax on recreational marijuana that attempts to address past and present harm to black residents, including homeownership grants. Asheville, North Carolina also formed a reparations initiative last year that funds programs around homeownership and career opportunities for black residents, but does not offer direct payments. And locally, Amherst has created the African Heritage Reparations Assembly to research and propose a reparations plan that will include a fund and a community-wide process of reconciliation and repair for harms against black people. In this context of municipalities creating reparation funds and attempting community repair and reconciliation, how do you propose the city of Northampton begin to reckon with its past and current harm to black residents? Go ahead, Jesse, you have two minutes.
I think that the most important thing is to center and listen to the black community that we have in the area. There is a group of people who have already begun thinking about this locally. Initially, they didn't include the voices of black community members, which they have since rectified. But I think we frequently get into a place of white saviorism when we try to address things such as reparations. I am wholly for reparations. I think that it is important and a set, and a necessary aspect of of healing and of facing the true history that everyone in, who lives in this country is a part of. But I think that it needs to, we need to follow the ideas of our black communities in order to understand how best to move forwards with reparations because it is really about what they want and what they need at this moment, rather than what we think that they can use. The community impact fee that Lemmy spoke about, I think, is also an important aspect that we need to bring back in order to support not just this, but any number of community-centered aspects that need some financial assistance in this town.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you. We will now swing back to the Northampton Policing Review Commission report for this question. The report recommended the formation of the now-new Community Care Department. What principles should be prioritized when selecting members for the yet-to-be-formed advisory board? I'll give two choices, A or B. A, the advisory board should be committed to non-coercive, non-punitive principles and approaches and only be open to members who agree to work in support of those values. Or B, the advisory board does not need to be committed to non-coercive, non-punitive principles and approaches. Please choose A or B, then we will follow up with clarifying questions.
That's an easy one, definitely A.
Okay, and you now have two minutes to explain your vision of A or anything else you would like to elaborate on about your choice.
Thank you. So I think that it is imperative that the advisory board be committed to non-coercive and non-punitive principles and really even push that further to be committed to ensuring that the Department of Community Care be non-carceral. The only way that we can begin the repair process of helping our community, especially around emergency situations, is to ensure that the help is actual, ensure that it is not something that will end up with somebody either imprisoned or hospitalized against their will. Really make sure that any coercive or punitive repercussions that are inherent in the laws and policing in the country are outside of the realm of the Community Care Department. Because at its heart, this department is about helping the community. It's about helping individuals who are in need during emergencies or even not during emergencies. This department really needs to be there to support the community. And the only way that that can happen is to give power to the community and have them know that it doesn't matter what type of situation that they're in, they will not be punished for it. Because we shouldn't punish anybody when they're in the middle of a crisis.
There we go. Sorry, everyone. Thanks, Jesse. For this next question, this next question is about the power balance between the city council and the mayor. You will have two minutes to respond, and here goes. In East Hampton and Springfield and many cities across the country, the city council holds more legislative power than the Northampton City Council currently does. Would you advocate for the mayor-city council, the mayor-city council power balance to change or stay the same? You have two minutes to explain.
I think that part of a well-run government is checks and balances. There are, as you mentioned, Springfield, East Hampton, and many other cities where the city council and the mayor have a much more even amount of power. And that results in a lot of the checks and balances that are inherent in having this two-party, not two-party, but two-sided coin. I would definitely think, I would definitely say that Northampton's power balance is, is off. The mayor has a lot more power than the city council does. And I would just as a, not, not as a city councillor, but speaking just from the viewpoint of a citizen, thinking about democracy, I would much rather live in a town that has a well-regulated power balance at its core than one that is extremely off-center. And so I would definitely support and will support any changes that will bring those two sides to a better equilibrium.
Excellent, thank you. All right, and then for the next question, question number seven, audience members, candidates are given two options. They could choose 7A or 7B. Jesse, have you, have you already decided which one you'll answer, or do you want a reminder? 7A, okay, I'm gonna read the question. Given that the city of Northampton both owns land and taxes residents who own property, how do you see the city beginning to reckon with its current benefit from and history of colonization and stolen land? And how could the city council begin to build relationships with Nipmuck and other Indigenous leaders locally to attempt land rematriation and/or other projects of addressing past and present harm? You have two minutes, thanks.
Thank you. This goes a little bit back to what I mentioned around reparations insofar as I think it is important to continually keep in mind that what the city wants is not necessarily what our Indigenous neighbors want. I think that we need to de-center the ideals of white people and, and white thinking and actually listen to and communicate with the communities that are surrounding us. So how to build, begin building relationships with the Nipmuck and other Indigenous leaders locally, I think, is by having conversations. But I think that we have had many, many, many decades, if not centuries, of examples where those conversations have started and led to genocide, terror, any, any terrible things that have happened to. any, any terrible things that have happened to Indigenous peoples. And so we really need to be careful about how we move forward around this. I am definitely for the idea of land back, the idea of rematriation. I think that there are a lot of ways that we can do it. There's a lot of land that the city gets year over year from, from people who have passed away and deeds their, their land to the city and other taxes and other ways that we can do things like that. But I think the first step is really to have a legitimate conversation and start building that bridge so we can continue to go down this path of repairing the harms that have been done in the past.
Thank you, Jesse. Now, I am going to read three key principles about disability justice. As you hear the principle, please indicate the level of your support and advocacy for it on a scale of zero to 10, where zero means you would not advocate for it, and 10 means you would strongly advocate for it. You will have the opportunity, after your rating, you'll have two minutes to share your thoughts on why you chose the rating you did. Okay, a scale of zero to 10. One: All initiatives must be non-coercive and done with the consent of the person who needs support, care, or de-escalation.
10.
Okay, number two. Peer-led and initiated programming, resources, and support should be funded and prioritized over psychiatric facilities and interventions.
10.
Okay, number three. We must validate neurodivergent and/or disabled people's means, desires, experiences, and leadership over those of professionals.
I would like to not number this one and just address it as a, in my, in my statement following, if that's all right.
Okay, yes, go ahead and share your thoughts. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. When I was reading through this question earlier, I come at these things with a very optimistic and hopeful point of view and similar to envisioning abolition as a bright future that is community-supported, thinking about validating neurodivergent and/or disabled people's needs, desires, and experiences and leadership over those of professionals. My first thought is that we would be in a place where professionals have those needs, desires, and experiences, either as lived experiences themselves or already centering those ideas for neurodivergent or disabled peoples. However, I also realize that the reality that we live in is very dissimilar to that, to that optimistic future. And so I would say that this final point would be a 10 in reality, though I wish that it didn't need to be rated at all. And that actually goes for the other two in, as well, because I feel like there are facilities and there are ways of intervening in emergency situations and helping people that will eventually, in, in this optimistic future, be a place that won't be harmful and be a place that the peer-led programming will actually get to a point where we won't have to realize the fact that there are psychiatric facilities in this area that are, that cause more harm than they perpetrate to cause good. So I just hope that we can push to get to that, that future.
Thank you, Jesse. For our last question, you'll have two minutes. We've heard a lot about community responders and police responses to situations, and the North Hampton Policing Review Commission, in its final report, advocated for removing police from as many unnecessary interactions as possible in order to reduce the footprint of policing in the community. Can you describe what your vision for public safety is going forward, whether and where police fit in, and why you think that is the best way forward to reduce the harms done by policing? Go ahead, Jesse.
I, as may be explicit in, in many of my answers here, I constantly come back to strengthening and building communities. I think that that is the best way that we can move forward in support, in being able to be there for one another, in being able to have empathy and a true understanding of how other people exist in this, in this world and ideally exist in this world without the interference of white supremacy and without the interference of violence caused by policing. There are a number of communities that exist where this is actually true. We can look to examples from the Zapatistas, La Polivera, the popular assembly of the people of Oaxaca, the regional coordinator of community authorities in Guerrero State. These are all examples of communities that have come together, many of them emerging out of incredibly violent areas and have shown that community-centered power without state-driven policing can and does work. We cannot get there tomorrow, and this is a long and difficult road to this vision, but it starts with developing a strong and robust community, such as we are trying to develop with the Department of Community Care that is entirely separate from the carceral system so that we can empower and strengthen the bonds between all of our communities that we live in.
Thank you, Jesse. You have done a very great job of answering all our hard questions. Thank you so much for being with us and for taking.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Yeah, it, we're really grateful that you came. Thank you so much. Best of luck Tuesday. We are now going to hear from our next candidate. This is David Criss. And after David Criss, we will hear from David Murphy.
Great. Yes, thank you, Jesse, and welcome, David. So we will, hello, we will start by asking you to introduce yourself. You will have one minute to do so. Go ahead.
Okay, I just, sometimes a microphone gets messed up. My name's David Criss. I'm running for Ward Three City Council. And a little bit about myself, I'm originally from Tampa, Florida. And in Florida, I saw a lot of, a lot of inequalities and a lot of firsthand experience of how systems are designed to benefit certain folks and leave other folks sort of high and dry, for lack of a better phrasing. I moved to the River Valley about 15 years ago, and I moved to North Hampton about five years ago. And what I've seen in North Hampton is very similar things to what I saw when I was a child in Florida. Professionally, I work in the restaurant industry, so I work with a lot of folks who are working-class people, people with different immigration statuses and people who are just new to our country. And again, I've seen, it's really informed my experiences about working-class people and, and everything that goes into that and folks who are coming to the United States. And so I decided recently, or not recently, I guess last year, or early this year, rather, to run for City Council, because I felt like the current city government does not have the needs and wants of working-class people and does not represent folks who are not part of a certain establishment or status quo of property owners and business owners in the city of North Hampton. And so that's my main goal, is to try to make working-class folks and lower-income folks have a voice in the city government and that our needs are met and validated.
Awesome. You know, before, Yaping, do you mind? I just forgot to do some housekeeping stuff. Thank you so much, David, for your introduction. For those of you who've just joined us or who came partway through Jesse's talk, I just want to introduce myself and my co, my co-moderator will introduce herself. I'm Jane Stevenson from Western Mass, showing up for racial justice. SURG is a national organization, and we're really, really honored to help co-host this event tonight. Also, I, we will be referencing a few reports, a couple of reports that the city of North Hampton commissioned. One is a barriers to opportunity. Oh, gosh, I don't know the full name of it. Unlocking Opportunity and Assessment of Barriers to Fair Housing in North Hampton. And then the other is the North Hampton Police Review Commission Report. So when, when, when it's necessary, we're gonna try to do some direct quoting from those reports. For those of you who've just joined us. Okay, Yaping, please, please take it away from me.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. For people that came in, my name's Yaping, and I work with North Hampton Abolition now. So for our first question, we, for the first question, had played an audio clip from Chanjerai Komunika so that the audience can hear something a little different. We're going to play another clip by Cat Brooks on the same theme.
The events in the summer of 2020, sparked by the cold-blooded murder of George Floyd by former Minneapolis police officer Derek Chauvin, catapulted an important question into the public imaginary. Is modern-day policing reformable? Or do we need to move beyond it entirely? Most of the thousands of people who poured out into the streets last summer understood that the murder of George Floyd was not just an isolated incident, not just the actions of a single bad apple. They understood that the entire institution of policing was responsible, that despite the years of reform, police continue to kill about 1,000 people every year. They continue to terrorize Black, Brown, and poor communities, and they do what they do, for the most part, with zero accountability. For the first time since this institution was actually created, and we'll get into the history in a little bit, people in very large numbers were saying, no, we are done with reform. It's not just a few bad apples. The entire barrel is rotten.
When you look at the millions of dollars we've wasted on reform, the millions of dollars in training, the millions of dollars in technology, the millions in, right, in rewriting policy, none of that shit has worked. We've done it, right? We've done all of those things.
Cat Brooks is the co-founder of the Anti-Police Terror Project in Oakland, California, a Black-led, multiracial, intergenerational coalition that seeks to build a replicable and sustainable model in order to eradicate police terror in communities of color.
We've rewritten use-of-force policies. We've made people learn about the history of racism in this country. We've spent money to train Black and Brown people inside of communities to take law enforcement jobs. We've done work around gender, not we, but you know, I mean, like, all of those things, and those are all things that we paid for. It's not like law enforcement hasn't been given opportunity after opportunity to get its shit together, right? It either doesn't want to, or it can't.
Okay, so our first question, David, is what is your understanding of the Movement for Black Lives' stance on police reforms that give more power, money, and legitimacy to police, such as more police training, community policing, co-responder programs, and more? And why do you think this is their stance? Go ahead, David.
So from my understanding, and you know, I, I don't know all the nuances of the Movement for Black Lives and their official stance, but from my understanding, that it's essentially reforms don't work and that we have to try something new in, in our society, that reforms are just kind of a sort of circular thing that, you know, it's just, how would I describe it? Water going down a drain, you know? It doesn't really make policing any better. It doesn't really make communities any safer. It's just more of a sort of cash cow for police departments to get additional training, additional funding, different technology, as the speaker just said. So that's kind of my understanding of the platform for Movement for Black Lives. I don't, I'd also, I just want to, sorry, I'm sorry.
You've got time.
I just also want to say that, you know, maybe this is in the next question. I try to, you know, that, that, that I kind of agree with that, that reforms are, they don't really work. And I think maybe someone could point me in the direction of this quote, but I remember this really spoke to me from all the city council meetings I went to last year in the city of North Hampton around policing, where it's like, the history of policing is a history of reform and that we've tried all these things and they never seem to work. There was a study done in 2015 in the city of Detroit where they increased diversity, which, they increased diversity in the police department, and what they found was that the rates of police violence and things of that nature were exactly the same, even though if they had a more diverse policing in the city of Detroit, the end result was still the same. So that it, to me, that just spoke to me, and that was about six, seven years ago, that it doesn't really, who we change and what we do doesn't really make the institution of policing any kinder or any gentler.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks. Sorry, ended your timer so early. That was premature of me. So thanks for following up. Great. For question number two, there are two parts. This question relates to the 90-plus-page report the city released in 2018 that I referred to. It's called Unlocking Opportunities and Assessment of Barriers to Fair Housing in North Hampton. This report gave an overview of the housing situation in North Hampton, and some of the recommendations included rent stabilization, rent control, investing in public transportation, and creating more affordable housing. So for the first part, you will have two minutes to respond. Part one, what would you do as city councillor to address affordable housing, renters' rights, and other issues that North Hampton residents without homes face? Go ahead.
To just sort of echo what Jesse was saying, I think in order to address houseless people, I think we have to be creative in our thinking. You know, everything from tiny homes to, you know, stronger temporary housing. I think we have to be bold and we have to think outside the box. And maybe there's ideas that I don't know, or this report doesn't know, I think. So we just have to follow through on that. In terms of like housing people who are not housing insecure, I think the key is to also just have city councillors who understand the issue and to have people who are gonna advocate. Because I believe that the state level, it's actually illegal for municipalities to pass rent control across the state of Massachusetts. But I think it's important that we have a city, city officials who are gonna advocate and fight for those things, regardless of whether or not there's a sort of law against or for something. And I think that we need to be comfortable fighting for that. I also think that part of that same level of advocacy is just talking about fundamentally what property and housing are in today's world, which are a commodity, and they're treated as such when fundamentally, people should be able to have a roof over their head regardless of income or regardless of lifestyle choices, quote-unquote. Everyone is entitled to housing. So I think that's part of the conversation that needs to happen, is the decomodification of housing and that housing is fundamentally a human right. It shouldn't be left to private equity firms and speculative markets. It should be fundamental for folks to be able to be secure and comfortable and safe with a roof over their head.
You're done?
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, I just don't want to cut you off again. Thank you very much. For number two, the second part of this question. I'm gonna ask you to do one of those rating things again, where you say, like, on a scale of zero to 10, with like zero being not at all important and 10 being imperative, your stance on some of the recommendations that came out of the housing report. And then you're gonna have some time to kind of explain yourself. So on a scale of zero to 10, what is your stance of importance on rent control or rent stabilization?
I would say a 10.
Okay. How about investing in public transportation?
10.
And the last one is creating more affordable housing?
10.
Okay, great. So you have two minutes to talk, say anything else that you haven't yet said about housing in North Hampton.
Okay, so I, I read that report. And it was like part of something I, you know, to learn more about housing in the city of North Hampton. It was pretty interesting. And then that report goes further than just rent stabilization and, and things of that nature. It talks about eliminating finder's fees. It talks about reducing first, last, and security deposit. So upfront costs, you know, and other locales across the country have, you know, worked on that and have done that. So I, I think that's also a part of how we can increase access to. So I think that's also a part of how we can increase access to housing and make housing a more sustainable thing for folks, especially renters, is by reducing that upfront cost. Because in the city of Northampton, to move into an apartment, you have to have to save like $4,500 to $5,000. And that's, if you're a working-class person, or just in general, that's a lot of money just to save to be able to just live in an apartment. And so I think it's important that we don't just look at the number of what, what someone pays to live in a one-bedroom or two-bedroom, but what is the upfront costs that go into having that one-bedroom or two-bedroom? So I would go even further and say I support looking into eliminating background checks or finder's fees or first, last, and security deposits, or some combination of those. And the thing about affordable housing, and Jesse touched upon this, what is affordable? For someone who makes six figures a year, paying two grand a month for an apartment might be affordable. For someone who's making $25,000 or $30,000 a year, affordability is a completely different, you know, it's a very subjective number based upon your income and based upon what you do for a living. And so that's why I'd like to see us move towards a model where it's less about, quote unquote, affordability, but access to housing again. So what that looks like for me is like building social housing where a cross-section of income for, cross-section of incomes are able to be eligible to live in this social housing units. So everyone from, you know, working-class folks to the traditional, like, middle-class teacher, white-collar professionals, you know, in the sort of classic Marxist sense of middle-class professionals.
All right. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, David. This next question has been accompanying an audio clip from Miriam Kaba. Since the audience has already heard that, we are going to play a Ruth Wilson Gilmore clip first and then ask the same question.
Do I, Ruth Wilson Gilmore, say there aren't people who harm other people or people who engage in reprehensible acts? Of course I don't. I'm not a fool. I, like many abolitionists, came to abolition because we were tired of harm and we wanted to see something else happening in our communities and in the world. We didn't come idealistically thinking that there was no such thing as harm. Rather, we looked at the political category of crime and wanted to take it apart. The main reason that abolitionists in the movement don't use the word crime in a straightforward way is that it's not a straightforward category. What gets lumped into that word and certainly what appears in the front of people's minds in their everyday common sense, people who are listening to us talk are immediately rushing to understand is, why are they talking as though people don't hurt and rob other people? That's what people think crime is. So one question that we abolitionists ask ourselves is, what are the conditions under which it is more likely that people will resort to using violence and harm to solve problems? This is a question we ask ourselves. What can we do about it so that there is less harm? And one thing that we have learned is that where life is precious, life is precious. So there are all kinds of people throughout the abolitionist world in the United States and beyond, who, for example, have tried to figure out how to reduce, if not completely do away with, the kinds of relationships that make people vulnerable to interpersonal violence, particularly of the domestic or intimate sort. So there is huge amount of work on that. And I don't mean work that people have written up in esoteric academic journals. I mean the work that people do on the ground every day to keep themselves and their communities safe and well.
Okay, so you will have two minutes to respond. What is your definition of abolition? And what informs your understanding of abolition? Go ahead, David.
So my, my definition of abolition is that it's really about creating societal and material conditions for people that can reduce the size and scope of using police or using punishment and using prisons as a tool to address those social, excuse me, the lack of social and material conditions. And so what that looks like for me in a practical sense, not to sound like a broken record, but having access to housing, having access to fulfilling dignified work, having access to food, having access to clean water, having access to basic rights, you know, these things that, I'll just say it as a white person, that I sometimes take for granted. And, but that's really what I sort of informs my view about abolition, is addressing these roots, you know, the lack of material conditions for people. And so what informs me and how I came to this position is sort of my own personal experiences living in Florida. I lived in a housing project. I was bused to school about 45 minutes a day. And the community I lived in was, didn't really have many parks. We didn't really have a grocery store. We had a lot of police who drove by and we had a lot of people who were down on their luck. But going to school after the 45-minute bus ride every day, I'd go to a predominantly wealthy, predominantly white suburb where kids were able to play baseball after school. There wasn't really police. They had plenty of access to grocery stores and after-school activities. And so that's kind of what's informed my views about abolition and the work around abolition, is just my firsthand experience seeing the two worlds, I guess, for lack of a better phrasing, of who gets what and who doesn't. And so that's, that's just my general view and that's what informs my, my viewpoints and my decisions and why I support abolition.
Great. Thank you, Jesse. I mean, David, sorry. I'm getting a little tired too. Maybe I need to do some self-care. All right. And speaking of getting tired, I just want to say, at some point, if I dip out of this, it's a totally pre-planned thing that I have to leave. I don't want anyone to worry that there was like a roller skating accident in the house or something. So if, when, when that time comes, I'm going to go and Yaping is going to finish because she's awesome and she'll do it. All right, David, thank you very much for that answer. That was really cool to hear. Okay, so for question number four, you'll have two minutes. And this is about reparations in Northampton. And for those of you who haven't sat through these questions already three times, I'm going to read it. Last year, the city of Evanston, Illinois, formed a reparations fund from a sales tax on recreational marijuana that attempts to address past and present harm to black residents, including homeownership grants. Asheville, North Carolina, also formed a reparations initiative last year that funds programs around homeownership and career opportunities for black residents, but does not offer direct payments. And right here, locally, Amherst, Massachusetts, created an African Heritage Reparations Assembly to research and propose a reparations plan that will include a fund and a community-wide process of reconciliation and repair for harm against black people. In this context of municipalities creating reparation funds and attempting community repair and reconciliation, how do you propose the city of Northampton begin to recognize, I mean, begin to reckon with its past and current harm to black residents? David, go ahead. You have two minutes.
So I think first and foremost, the way we reckon with its past and current harm is acknowledging people who are saying things now. I think that's the first step with any sort of reckoning, is that we have to acknowledge folks right now and what they're telling us. In terms of sort of like a policy of reparations, I think a key thing is, again, making investments in the community. And I'm glad, I, I think Jesse and Lemmy brought it up, the impact fees of the marijuana facilities. Because it was my understanding that that's what the impact fees were for, was to actually invest in community and put back into the towns that these entities are, you know, making money in. And so I think in terms of like a policy standpoint, I think that's really what it comes down to, is making the investments in communities. And so that looks like, you know, better schools, more equitable treatment, affordable housing. I hate, I hate sounding like a broken record, but I think that's like a big component, is actually making investments for people, especially communities that were armed and are continue to harm by white supremacy, is by actually making at a dollar amount, an investment in their community. But I think any of those decisions have to be informed by BIPOC voices and BIPOC leaders. And that's just sort of my one-off take from the question. But I don't want to say that that's universally what has to be done and that's the only way to do it and that's the only way it can be done. I think it's, you know, again, to double back onto the beginning, it's, I have to listen to folks and we have to listen to folks about what they, what they need and what they want. And it can't just be a one-size-fits-all and that I know best. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. We will swing back now to the Northampton Policing Review Commission Report. For this question, the report recommended the formation of the now-new Community Care Department. What principles should be prioritized when selecting members for the yet-to-be-formed Advisory Board? I'll read two choices, A and B, and then you'll have a chance to choose and then follow up afterwards. So A, the Advisory Board should be committed to non-coercive, non-punitive principles and approaches and only be open to members who agree to work in support of those values. Or B, the Advisory Board does not need to be committed to non-coercive, non-punitive principles and approaches.
I would say A.
Okay, thank you. And now you have two minutes to share what A looks like to you or anything else you would like to about this question.
So I think, to sort of go back to the beginning of our interview or what have you, I think it's important that we don't just fall into the same patterns of what policing is, where we just use sort of punishment and that we just use threats and we just use violence to help folks. I think the key is that we have a, a different way of thinking and a different way of approaching it. What I'd like to see from the Department of Community Care is folks who are familiar with this, like personally familiar in some way about the issues of like with drug addiction or mental health crises, like I'd like to see folks who are actually, who've had those experiences and would be able to peer-relate to the individuals and who are needing help. Because we don't want to have a situation where, again, it's just policing 2.0, but with a better name and a nicer image. Because that doesn't really address anything and it's essentially just a reform. And so I think that's why I chose A, is we need a commitment from individuals that that's the goal, is to be non-punitive, as it says, or really just not punishing people, not using violence as an end-all to people's problems and people's needs. And so I think, and what I'd like to see, and this is sort of my own view, is that the Department of Community Care performs outreach to folks in a, again, a non-coercive, non-punitive way, but actually is involved in the community and actually asks people what they need. You know, sometimes people might just need a bottle of water or a cigarette or something like that. I'd like to see the department fill that niche and actually perform that type of outreach.
Thank you. So for our next question, and because Jane had the fancy background with the timer on it and I don't have that, I'm going to hold my finger up when there's either, when there's a minute and then 30 seconds left to be the timer. So the next question is about the power balance between mayor and councillors. You will have two minutes to respond. Actually, I'll hold my phone timer up. That's how we'll do it. That's clearer than my fingers. So the next question is about the power balance between mayor and councillors. You will have two minutes to respond. In East Hampton, Springfield, and many cities across the country, the city council holds more legislative power than the Northampton City Council currently does. Would you advocate for the mayor's city council power balance to change or stay the same? Please explain. Go ahead, David.
So I, I just want to be nuanced, you know, I don't want to be seen as advocating for more power for myself. But I, I think as a non-possible, non-possible councillor or candidate, I do think we need to have changes in terms of how our city operates in just the structure of government. Because fundamentally, right now, the mayor, the position of the mayor has a lot of power. They can determine committee appointments. They can essentially just pass a budget with no real opposition. It's, they have a lot of power and a lot of influence in the city of Northampton. And I think in order for a government or a democracy to function, there has to be some form of a balance or a check against a, another position in, in government. So I would say just as a citizen, I would advocate, or even as a councillor, I would advocate. I do fundamentally think that there needs to be a redistribution of power in terms of the position of the mayor and the position of city council.
Thank you. So the next question, we have a choice, 7A or 7B? Do you already know which one you want to answer or shall I read them and then you can choose?
Um, we'll, we'll do 7B.
7B, okay, great. So I'll, I'll read it for the audience to hear it. In the recent policing bill passed in the Massachusetts Legislature, the presence of a school resource officer, or SRO, is now determined by the school superintendent. In the context of Northampton-area schools, what is your take on SROs? Who would you speak with to convey your opinions? You will have two minutes.
Well, I don't think I have to say that basically an SRO that exists in schools is just a sort of foundation for the school-to-prison pipeline that exists throughout America. And so if we're serious about reducing the size and scope and serious about reducing the carceral state and policing in the United States and in Northampton, we have to remove police from schools. Because fundamentally, what that does is it criminalizes youth. You know, when I was a kid, I made a lot of dumb decisions. And I don't think we need a situation where folks are being criminalized because they're young people. And when you bring into, bring in the elements of racism and classism and things of that nature, only inevitably, police will use the position they have within a school to set a kid on a track that they oughtn't be being put on, which is, you know, criminalization and possible jail time and possible prisons. You know, in some places, police can essentially, you know, arrest a kid in school and send him right off the juvenile. And so in terms of how we can remove the SROs in the, in the city of Northampton, I think as my role as city councillor would be to talk to the superintendent, I'd like to speak to my Ward Three counterpart on the school board or the school board in general. And so really just sort of power map that and pressure people to remove the SRO. So I, I, that's how I view my position in regards to this topic, is using the bullet pit of city council to advocate for the removal of the SRO in school.
Thank you. Okay, so the next question, I am going to read three key principles about disability justice. As you hear the principle, please indicate your level of support and advocacy of it on a scale of zero to 10, where zero means you would not advocate for it and 10 means you would strongly advocate for it. You will have the opportunity, after rating your advocacy, you'll have two minutes to share your thoughts on why you chose the rating that you did. So one, all initiatives must be non-coercive and done with the consent of the person who needs support, care, or de-escalation.
Oh, 10, sorry.
No problem. Okay, number two. Peer-led and initiated programming, resources, and support should be funded and prioritized over psychiatric facilities and interventions.
10.
Okay, number three. We must validate neurodivergent and/or disabled people's needs, desires, experiences, and leadership over those of professionals.
10.
Okay, thank you. So now you have two minutes to share your thoughts.
So I think, again, it's, you know, folks who are neurodivergent are sometimes the, sort of, are a major recipient of, of discrimination. People do treat people who are neurodivergent with... People do treat people who are neurodivergent with very heavy-handed approaches. And a lot of times that their needs and desires are not validated and they're not considered important because of X, Y and Z. And so I think the key is to make sure that we are treating folks with respect and again, that we're not using punishment as a way to help people. So I think that's like the key. I will say this. I'd like to know more about what this looks like. You know, I'll be the first to admit, I have somewhat of a blind spot with folks who are neurodivergent. I don't, I support people and I support using, you know, peer-led things. I just don't know enough about what that looks like in practicality. And I just want to be fully transparent that I need to educate myself more about the topic. I support people. I just don't, I know maybe that's not what people want to hear in this, you know, forum, but I, and if someone wants to reach out to me and educate me about it, I would gladly take that opportunity. I just want to be fully transparent that I don't, it's a blind spot for me. I don't know enough information about it, about the topic and what the, what the needs truly are for neurodivergent people. But I want to know what they are and I want to do better. But I just wanted to say that and be fully transparent with people so there's not any misunderstanding.
Thank you. Okay, so this is our last question. You'll have two minutes. We've heard a lot about community responders and police responses to situations. And the North Hampton Policing Review Commission, in its final report, advocated for removing police from as many unnecessary interactions as possible to reduce the footprint of policing in the community. Can you describe what your vision for public safety is going forward? Whether and where police fit in and why you think that is the way forward to reduce the harms done by policing? Go ahead, David. You have two minutes.
So I think right off, right off, I think the way that we could reduce unnecessary things with the police is taking them out of traffic situations. So things like, you know, less traffic stops, using maybe something like security cameras or even a community-led response to traffic, you know, more trained crossing guards or, you know, reflective tape or speed bumps, really just taking police out of something as simple as traffic stop. And traffic in general, I think, would be a good way to reduce the size of policing. So, you know, on big event, big event days, having volunteers or non-police conducting traffic, I think is a good, you know, a good stepping stone. And I also think that there's other ways within that Policing Review Commission that we could remove the police from certain situations as well. Like one of the things that came up in the Policing Review Commission was about the use of like cash. They didn't say cash grants exactly, cash transfers for, who are, for people who are who are in domestic violence situations. So folks can just simply remove themselves from the situation and not have to worry about how they're going to be able to survive. I think that's a way that we can sort of lessen the impact of police and lessen the interactions with police. And so that's where I think going forward, that's a way we can, those two big ones, I think, are a way we can reduce interactions with police outside of Department of Community Care. And what, the way we, I think we can, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm just reading the question. And so that's how I, sorry, sorry, Yapping, I'm spammer. I just got out of work. I'm sorry, guys.
I'm just trying. Okay, great. No, thank you so much, David. That was, thank you. So that was the last question. David, thank you so much. We appreciate you taking time to share your position on these integral issues. And we were going to move on to David Murphy, but we actually received an email that David Murphy's schedule changed this evening and he's no longer able to make it. So with that, we conclude our racial justice forum. Thank, thank the candidates so much for showing up tonight and engaging these issues. Thank everyone who came. We will, we will be in touch and send the resources that we included with the questions tonight so that people can engage with them more. And we really look forward to more public education opportunities and open dialogues with the community in the future. Thank you all so much and have a wonderful evening. Good night.